We talked about scholarships for those that would have hardship.
And when Stephen Hawke quit talking, we'll get busy.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, we're getting started. And we've got two topics tonight. The first is around the FFP work. In our last school session, we talked about those two potential analysis reports. We talked about questions the board wanted to have answered regarding the acceleration of the FFP. That was just a week ago. I don't know if we've had any further comments or questions or discussion items. I really don't, but I open it up to board members if they have anything else they want to discuss on this topic tonight.
And before they go, I'll just add, so Dwayne and Kim and I have been working to make sure that we have the agenda. The board agenda's moving forward with the correct items on there. So Dwayne's on vacation this week, but he's actually reviewing while he's with his grandkids. He'll have a full timeline for us when he gets back next week. We're gonna email that out to you as soon as we get it, just so you can see the dates that he and Craig went through and identified from a discussion, presentation, action timeline in terms of what you need to hear when. And if there are key dates by which action needs to be taken in order for things to happen, they're gonna have those all laid out for you, so.
And I think we'd also asked for some looks at accelerating some of the other projects. And I think we've got an item on the April 10th meeting, and that's when I'm expecting, is that right?
Yep, Dwayne's looking at them to say, because remember, we talked about some of the projects that are kinda, I guess I describe them as end of the hallway projects, those kinds of things that you can do while students are still resident in the building. It don't require you to disrupt their learning environment, so he's looking at those. I think Phil brought up a, no Lori brought up a couple of them that might involve modulators. And what's the sequencing of the modular? How does that look? What flexibility is there in that process? So we asked Dwayne to look at that also.
Okay, and so we'll hear that on the 10th.
So those are the three things we were looking at, and he specifically asked me what else we should be looking at.
Yeah, I wanna make sure that since we are bringing this ag curriculum on, especially with what's gonna happen at Liberty and things like that, that there's, that that's part of the discussion. What opportunities there would be for greenhouse, that type of thing, facilities that would facilitate, of course, along those lines, and also with any work that we have going in City to West. And I know that it's outside of the bond and things like that, but if Silo and, Silo gets, or, excuse me, Save gets extended, I'm showing the page, that we include a discussion on Hill's issues that weren't addressed with the bond, that they're also included in any type of future long range.
Maybe what I'll do is I'll pull that list of future projects that we had that were outside Save and then make sure that's an addition to the agenda so that we've got that list.
Okay, I just, I just wanna make sure that when we're, we're going through this and we're accelerating others, we remember those that were left out.
Yeah, I think there were five of them on that list.
Right, yes. The list of stuff on the future projects, right?
Yeah, I think there were five, five things out there already.
Make sure we got the right stuff on it, because.
At some point, you're gonna have to start looking at your next 10-year plan or whatever it is.
Yes.
Sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
Maybe not, I mean, maybe we don't wanna use Save or something, if we are borrowed out so far already on it, then, you know, that could be a discussion that we need to have if we wanna borrow out even further.
That's what I was gonna ask, you know, maybe a reminder, because we did get it, you know, if, you know, with accelerating and anticipated savings and things like that, how does that affect our levy rate over the years, right? Because, you know, we just looked at what we're doing this year, knowing what it was. Because that's, that's what it would do is quickly pay that down, or, you know, whatever it is. But at what point do we look at having other, besides Save, right? It's not something we.
And I think another thing we might have to look at is depending on which version of the legislation goes through. If it does, one of them has us passing another revenue purpose statement. So one doesn't, one does, that'll obviously be taken care of in committee. And so that's something else we might have to take into consideration too, as we look at things like Hills and some of that. Because if we're gonna do a revenue purpose statement, I think we're gonna delineate some of those projects so that people see what they are.
Do you need a comment on this item?
I just wanted to make a brief comment. If you can pull out your magnifying glass and look at page 58 or not, just take my word for it, just an FYI, Bridgewater is a development that's going on in Corahville. It actually has 600 units that are going in, that, what, the numbers that are in here are much less than that. And also this lists, it is being in the Lincoln zone, and it is actually in the Corahville Central zone. And while that might not seem like a big deal.
It is.
It is a big deal, because it's a different, a different path for secondary and. I assume that those numbers are being counted as Lincoln numbers, not Corahville Central. I thought the Corahville Central number was awfully low, considering all the development there.
I'll have them go back and take a look at that. I wonder if the, I wonder if the, that, because I know where that Bridgewater development is, I wonder if it spans both and they've got them all counted in?
It's clearly all on the Corahville Central side.
All right.
There isn't any on the east side of First Avenue at all.
So it's page 16, what was the name of it?
It's 58, and it's, the number, or the lines aren't numbered, so they just.
And what was the?
It's Bridgewater.
Bridgewater, okay. I don't have something to write there.
It's a very large, compact, though, development that's going in. It's gonna have, I would compare, if anybody's familiar with Ozark Ridge in Corahville, I would compare it to be similar to that in terms of housing.
If we can get some clarification on that, I'll send that out to you.
Thank you.
Hey, any other comments, questions, points of discussion? Moving on to the attendance and development discussions again, was when we had a real last discussion on this last Tuesday. I thought the merits of having one session at 6:00 instead of 9:00 or 10:00 at night were really evident, because we, I thought it was a fantastic discussion. Anything to add to what we discussed last time, which was the process? I know we probably still owe some feedback to, to board messaging, to Steve and Kristen. I actually have some thoughts that in lag time tomorrow night, in the negotiations, I'm gonna send over. But I don't know if you've received anything else, and I know we did share some of our drivers verbally, but I think getting that deck together, you know, going on a very active community engagement discussion process through the rest of the school year, with board leadership admin contributing. I mean, we're all very much locked on and armed to this, taking this message forward. So I know we're moving forward those steps.
Yep.
What else? Sean, do you feel like you want?
Can I offer a couple things?
Yeah.
So one of the things we're gonna do, because we know that everyone wasn't active in all of those, we're pulling some of the decks from, some of the slide decks from our earlier engagement processes. We'll send those all out to you. Kristen and I are trying to make sure we've got final versions of all of them. A couple of them, there's some formatting errors, so we're actually gonna try and find the original PowerPoints, not the PDFs. So we'll get those out to you, because I think it's important from a context standpoint for you to be able to take a look at those. She's working on a basic deck template. I will tell you that some of the previous decks have a lot of slides in them, and maybe that's too many. So, yeah, you can take a look at that and help us, help us think about refining those. So we'll send those all out to you, so they're food for thought. She's working on building what a deck format might look like, so she's ready to insert information when you have that ready for her. We sat down, took a look at calendars. Tuesdays are bad, Fridays are bad. And so really, you're looking at Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, kind of as your dates of, days of preference during the week. I will remind you, as I figured it out, when I started charting it out, that there are nine weeks between now and Memorial Day. So it seems like a long time, and it's a very, 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 very short time between now and Memorial Day. So just FYI for you on that. So we'll get, one of the things that we're doing as an admin team is we're looking at all those Monday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays to figure out how we can coordinate, to make sure that there's good support for you at all those meetings, so.
And maybe we do have a board meeting, too. And so we've got, you know, the various forums, TV, Twitter, and it's posted on board logs. People pay attention, that might be not a venue that's just no.
Sure, we stay away from Tuesdays, but we can certainly, I mean, Tuesdays obviously are pretty easy to use, because everybody's already got the block.
I would just make a suggestion, Wednesday is a very popular church night in our community. So that's something if, I mean.
Yeah, and maybe, just to echo that, and one of the things that we discovered is you start looking at the district calendar, there are no good nights.
Yeah.
So I'll just offer that out right away. There are literally no good nights. You pick this night, it's an elementary concert, then it's a high school, you know, there's some forensics thing going on, there's an athletic thing going on.
Kirkwood's International Night tonight.
It is, I know, I was over there today after school, and it sounded like a lot more fun than, well, not a lot more fun than coming here, it just sounded like fun, let me play it like that. It sounded like it would bend.
That's just hurtful, Steve.
It sounded very entertaining.
I mean, it may be we try to stage at the board meeting and then send the, a deck out. I don't know, I'm just trying to think, like, we try to hold these sessions and no one's gonna come because it's a compromise with so many things, and take advantage of our.
People will come, I mean, people will come.
Different people at different times.
We also talked about venue, just to offer that up for you, too. Sometimes that's hard for us to get in advance. Obviously, we have more control of our facilities, and so you might wanna think about if you're gonna do them on those, on those nights, that we think about rotating around our high schools and using our high schools as a, as a format. Before, we tried to pick a neutral site, we used Parkview Church for a couple of segments. That's a bit more of a challenge for us, just in terms of getting on their calendar and getting those things in advance. So Kristen and I were trying to look out there. A ton of conflicts on our high school calendars, we know that, too. But I think there's a little bit more of an ability for us to pick places within high schools that might work for us if we, if we decide we wanna do that, so.
And maybe for the initial one of board meeting, you know, at least get, start the ball rolling and say, hey, this is, we maybe.
And then emphasize, you know, these.
That it could happen, maybe sooner.
So back to her original comment there, content. So as you think of things that you wanna make sure that you include in there, we tried to capture from both our notes and the audio from the last work session, things that we think need to be in there. So we've got some kind of big picture headers in there, but we're really looking for your voice in that process. So if there are things that you want us to make sure that are kind of front and center as part of that discussion, please send those to us.
Okay, so we're really gonna push because us to get our thoughts in, because if we wanted to stage it initially at a board meeting, it should be the 10th. I know we just did agenda setting, because if we wait until the 27th, it's too late.
Yeah.
It's way too late, and if we, and if we try to do it for the 10th, that really challenges us to simplify. I mean, I don't think this is a 50-slide deck, I think this is 10 slides. Key messages, some data points, the big strong drivers, why we are so committed to driving and pushing this work. I don't know, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud, but we shoot from the 10th, it really forces us to get it done quickly and to simplify and really, I don't know, I'm happy to contribute ideas for editing, wordsmithing. I love to do that sort of thing, but we need our voices part of this. What do you think? Is that too fast? I think it's the only time, Frank, we need.
No, we've already started working on it, so we're really looking to make sure that we've got content.
If Kristen can get us out kind of the base template and then the surrounding material that can help us jog our thought process, I'll, I'll turn stuff around quickly.
I guess what I was gonna mention earlier, and I think maybe it's apropos here, is that we have a common theme going around that we have the sense of urgency, and then we don't get something done because we didn't follow a process, and we're gonna make sure we follow a process, but I think we don't wanna ignore the sense of urgency. And so I think something that would be good is at least some sort of estimated timeline of, here's the end date, right? Like, this is where we're gonna land on whatever decision's gonna be, and here's, and work our way back to, you know, the 10th, I guess, from that point forward, how we're gonna get from A to B.
Yep.
And that transparency tells everybody what we're trying to do and when we're gonna get it done by. And it makes all of us a little more accountable to it, too.
Sure.
So any sort of timeline, and it doesn't have to be perfect, but I think, because we're talking about, even then, it's a short time, like, we're talking, you know, a year, year and a half, or two years. Even if it, you know, even at two years, that's, it's a lot to get done, so I think it's important to.
You know, one of the key things is, as we get closer to the end of the process, from past the rounds of this, one of the key things are the board meetings, where there's the opportunity for community comment. You two will remember that from the last time around. So we can back that in from December and literally walk all those dates back for you right through the fall, so you can see when those, those opportunities are gonna be, both for people to come to community comment, if there's specific things we wanna present to the, the community on camera type of thing. So you can think about literally from, and is it the 10th or 11th of December next year, backed right into today, and we can walk you through all of it.
And I think that's a slide in the deck, there's a timeline.
Yeah, well, and speaking of timeline, you know, I ran into a former board member of the meeting, he's like, oh, you guys are really opening up a can of worms and that, and I thought about that, I was like, no, this was opened up a long time ago, when the board passed a policy and said this is what we're.
It's never closed.
Well, but, so it's still a policy, right? So it never closed, so just that idea that, you know, this is ongoing work, previous boards started this. This isn't just new people got elected and all of a sudden, you know, we're just moving forward with a plan that's been in place for quite a while, you know, to bring our schools within whatever percentage of each other.
Something I was gonna add is that I know in 2010, some of the sessions were televised. So if we could do them in venues that could be recorded, there wouldn't be as much pressure to have to do it at a board meeting, because then it could still be televised.
And would City Challenge, they help with that a lot?
They might.
Yeah, because that might be a good way that our folks, you know, they can kinda come in and do a setup with the light camera and the operators.
When, when we don't have a lot of content, our board meetings run over and over and over again. When we have more content, then we can plug things into the slots that they have available for us. Sometimes you can watch us daily.
I'm sure.
Did I do that, but I'm just saying. Sometimes you can do that.
People are surprised if people come to say, yeah, I saw you come.
Aye, aye, aye. The other thing I wanted to add to this discussion is that I appreciated our timeline discussion about boundaries, and I think what I heard was that you need a decision in December, or no later than December, for boundaries. But an element that I wanna make sure I understand is what is the timeline for a concept such as paired schools?
My immediate answer would have been December, just in concert with, with that, as a.
The same December?
Yeah.
Or following. Are you asking like paired schools for 2019 school year?
That's what I'm asking, is, is, is that time, I'm assuming that timeline is not the same, and so I'm just wondering, what is that timeline?
Well, you know, at the end of the day, curricularly, you're not changing anything. So it's still gonna have the same implications for us, transportation, staffing, before and after school program, just communication in general, back to our families. If you're talking thematic programming changes for schools, then I think that conversation, magnet schools, that kind of thing has to be long-term.
Yeah, that's a different discussion, and, and the magnet task force actually, I think, has some information in their packet about timeline, how much time is needed for that. But I don't know that I've ever heard on, on the paired school concept, how much time the district would need to implement that. From board decision to.
Just another form of boundary change.
That's what I was thinking.
You know, so that's why, that's why I said my immediate reaction is December. Now philosophically, it's different than a boundary change, but process-wise, we would, we would implement it like a boundary change.
So December gets you enough time to be able to pull that off?
Gives us enough time to pull off the process.
Yeah, I was just having.
The mental hurdle might be longer than.
Let's say if you're pairing two schools, and one school's K through three, you're gonna need more kindergarten style classrooms to be able to pull those off, right? I mean, like, that's a different classroom setup than a sixth grade classroom.
Yeah, no.
So you'd have to renovate the school, yeah.
Yeah, and that doesn't mean we couldn't teach kindergarten.
Right.
And, you know, we might have to put fewer kids in there, just because they take up more square footage as a kindergartner than a first grader.
I was just speaking from experience, my wife died at a kindergarten class, I was in kindergarten class before I went to renovation.
It's not ideal.
And she had a kindergarten class, and it's different.
It's different.
It's not ideal. Doesn't have a bathroom.
Right.
Just give that one as a primary driver of, it's different and not ideal.
Yeah.
So if you wanted to have it set up so that it was an ideal environment the day you moved in, we'd need at least the years lag time on that, if we're gonna do all those.
And then we'd have to have a funding source, too, for that, if you're talking renovations.
Well, and, but, but too, with pairs, one of the, one of the reasons to have that pair of discussion is operational efficiencies that you can gain from pairing.
Right.
And especially going into a tight budget, not necessarily blame on Liberty, but just state funding. What?
Dearly noted.
Dearly noted. That's a discussion we need to have, and, you know, if there, if there are operational cost savings, that, that needs to be part of that discussion, too, and.
You know, I'm thinking about it just from that kind of communication standpoint, parent standpoint. What we have to do is staff in transportation before and after school, what I've already mentioned there. But on the flip side, I mean, you've started to raise some good issues. How can we, or, I guess it goes back to Craig, forecasting what some of these implications would have back to our buildings. And so in all fairness, we can't also come with a proposal in December, then see what the financial impact is going to have, whether it's transportation on paired schools, or repurposing some of our classrooms, or even thinking about if you're a three, six attendant center, you're not gonna need your PKs most likely anymore. So.
You're also gonna need kindergarten playgrounds.
Yeah.
And one of the things we're gonna have to go through that process is, and I know we're spending a lot of time on this one topic, but, you know, keep in mind, this gives you an idea of the kinds of implications we have, because there are fire codes about who can attend school on what floor. So we have to be very judicious about which schools we pick, if we're looking at pairing. It's wherever our lower grades are, are gonna need that facility that actually allows us to meet fire code in terms of where they are located inside the school, so.
Sure.
Just, I mean, there, there are issues like that that we'll have to deal with. As soon as we look at potential solutions, it'll start knocking dominos over for us. And so I'm sure there will be unintended issues that we say December. That's December for us to do boundary changes, but if we're looking at anything other than a boundary change, we might have to be flexible as we figure out how many dominos there are, because I don't know what the law will look like.
Does it make sense to kind of think through those different scenarios which we might face or get into, or feel like we've got some support around, whether it's surely boundary change, paired schools, or magnet, and say, okay, if we think it's gonna be this, December's doable, if we think it's gonna be this one, it's gonna be 18 months. If we think it's gonna be this one, it's gonna have to be 24, whatever that looks like, so that people aren't going into it with some high hopes and expectations that we can't deliver on, again.
And I think my guess would be if these things happen, right, that it'll be staggered, it's not all gonna be at once, that we're gonna learn things as we go. Some things might, we might run up against some things that say we have to put it out another year because of X, Y, Z. So, but I think the sooner we start looking at these and maybe identifying, maybe probably a good idea to identify some of our most obvious pairs. And since we're thinking about that, maybe if we can get some early balloons floated out about it, you know, if this were gonna be an accident, we'd run into this fire code thing, or. And so maybe we have some of our schools now that, that make good, good sense geographically, it seems like. And we could start to discover some of these dominos before, before we get too far down.
Sure.
And it's like the boundary change is dependent on this pairing, and then we can't do either one because we hemmed ourselves. I mean, I don't wanna get to that place where we're hemmed in, and we, we can't do anything, you know.
You raise a good point, because there's a lot of interdependency in these types of changes. And so if there are specific things that you're thinking, hey, this might be a solution, not the solution, but a solution as part of kind of a suite of solutions, you'd send those to us, too, because then when we're sitting down, we can start doing some what-if scenarioing and think about some of those implications. I think the more we talk about that collectively, who's the board, we as administrative team collectively amongst the group of us, will identify more of those things that might tip as we move into it. And like JP said, the more of those things we know ahead of time, the more we can look at, say, realistic, unrealistic. We don't wanna set false expectations, and we wanna make sure the timelines are realistic, and that way we can have a pretty rational discussion with the community when we get out there.
I think what gets challenging is if we don't do pairing and boundary changes at the same time, then we've got kids that have multiple transitions.
Sure.
And that's something we really wanna try and minimize, according to Appendix 5, so.
Yes.
So if it is something that can be pulled off all at the same time, great, but if you need a different timeline, then I think we just need to know what we're working with, which I think I'm hearing you say, sooner you have that information, even if we don't make an absolute board decision, we can pull it off.
It might help, too, if we capture and collect some of these notes and send these out to you also. Just remind everyone, we send those things out via email. If you look at it and say, hey, I'd like to see this edit or that edit, if you'd send those back to me, then I can make those edits, I can kind of keep track of who suggested what so that we know who to turn to if we have a question about that. So we can, we can track the document that way, so that we know where those changes come from.
So what would the process be for a paired school discussion? Is that same as a boundary discussion, or is that different?
You know, part of it depends on what the parameters are we're looking for in the pairing. You know, are you looking for two similar sized schools? Are you looking for significant demographic differences between schools? You know, are there, from an intentionality standpoint, is it just operational efficiency? Are we also trying to achieve some kind of demographic balance? You know, those kinds of things help us. I mean, Amy and I actually had some conversation with the building principals already that said, hey, if this was an idea, who do you think your most ideal partner school would be? They didn't all come back with the same answers, not surprisingly. So, you know, we, we, we thought that might be a good place to start, too, just start them cold. If you had a dance partner, who do you think the best dance partner would be for your school, why? And we got a lot of different answers out there, you know. Some of them went straight to operational efficiency, some of them looked at demographic balance, some of them looked at natural proximity, we talked about geographic barriers between schools, and they said, well, that's really artificial, it's not really a geographic barrier, this would be a good match, so. We got a lot of different kinds of answers out of it. So part of it depends on the intentionality of the pairing and what we wanna, what we wanna achieve.
The other thing I'm thinking about is just trying to quickly run through the buildings around the district and thinking about how many two stories do we have sitting out there? Because most likely, they're gonna be, would be the upper grade level buildings, of course. Unless we could get special permission, Dwayne talks sometimes about, depending on what, how the building has been built and blah, 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 if they're up to fire code, that we may be be able to ask for a waiver. But just in that, I mean, we're probably not sitting out there in equal 10 to 10, you know, two-story versus one-story situation either.
Yeah, if we go K3, though, I think we can put third graders upstairs, so, you know, that, that might influence it, too, as we look at the cohort sizes, how many kids are in that school, kinda, how do they fit?
Well, you, three-story buildings that are pretty much only gonna be, like, upper grade, right?
I think so. Now, some of ours are two and a half story because of the way they come in, so we, we need to check on fire codes, so we understand really what our true options are with that.
I guess the other question would be, you have to, you have to develop a bunch of new bus routes, that would be possible bus routes, right? Then, I think we always hear you don't want the bus route is until you don't want the bus route cost is, until the bus route is, does that make sense?
Yeah, for those of you that aren't familiar, that it's a super time-intensive process for Durham to run new routes for us, so there's a pretty substantial fee that's associated with that, it's about 10,000 bucks for them to do a whole new routing run for us, so.
Just one routing run?
Yep, so.
District-wide.
Yeah, when they do a district-wide routing run. So when we, when we feed all 14,000 kids into the system, and they say, okay, based on your boundaries, this many kids live outside the elementary, outside the secondary, now let's create some routes for those kids. And it takes them, so two weeks last time, Phil, does that sound right?
Something like that, but doesn't, doesn't Esme have the ability to work with that software?
She can.
Or are we still dependent on?
She can, but she can't do like the first four steps kind of thing, we have, they have to do that. And that's, that's part of the challenge with it.
So now, when we did this with the Bell Schedule Task Force, we brought in Durham.
Yes, we did.
We brought Steve Miller in, and he provided much of the information that we needed to make the decisions. Yes, we didn't have the exact route, but we had the information to know what it was gonna cost us. And so the board made a decision based on actual dollar amounts, even though we didn't have a bus route yet.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, he gave us, and he was, he'd be not right in the bullseye, but he was pretty close.
Yeah, he was.
Please have to look it up, all the schools that currently have attendance busing to their home schools is going to have a double route, because they're gonna get attendance busing probably to that school as a young child. Two separate routes run into the same area, which is a double bus cost. Two separate routes run into the same area, which is a double bus cost.
It depends on if you work, like, you're gonna pick up kids in a neighborhood that potentially could end up at two different schools, right? Because this family here, one could go here, one could go there, you could do it with a bus, but then you've got, you gotta drop one of them off early, and then one off later.
Yeah.
And pick them up, and, so, you could do it with one bus, but it would, it would start messing stuff up probably, particularly when you start looking at like after school things and whatnot. But I think, you know, to answer kind of the question you had, Amy, is that, I think it's, you know, is it boundaries, or is it paired schools, or is it magnet? I think in the end, it's probably a little bit of everything, and I think it's, we do start somewhere that's the easier part, easy being boundaries. But we kind of have to start there, and then really target at these two schools as a pair, as opposed to the whole district's pairing schools, right? Because it's just not practical, I don't think, and it doesn't really help in a lot of cases, so it's, you know, where would it have impact? And maybe it's only two total schools, maybe it's a couple pairs, maybe it's not, and I haven't, I mean, I've thought about it, but I haven't really landed on how many I think would be effective. So, and I think that pushes that out, you know, that timeline, I think a magnet school would push out even farther. But I still think it's, that timeline part of it, and saying, okay, we're doing something, but we're doing it within the scope of reality, you know, and making sure that, you know, as we look from transitioning from boundaries to maybe paired schools, that we are looking at, you know, is a kid gonna move, you know, five times in five years, right? Like, that's obviously not something anybody wants, but maybe it will have to happen. I, I don't know, but I think we have to at least understand what the limitations are, like, just thinking about older kids being upstairs at a school, so that's, that's a limiting factor, right? Like, I hadn't even thought of it, I knew it, I guess, when you said it, and I was like, yeah, that totally makes sense, but I, I wasn't thinking of it. So I think outlining what some of those hurdles are gonna be is important to, even establishing a timeline of any sort is to have a lot of tackle. But I think boundaries are first. Let's do that.
I'm wondering if you're interested in, and I'm not trying to push you one way or another, what kind of feedback might you be collecting at these upcoming meetings? And what does it look like, what are your ideas, so that they're just not generated for them, that they can come to the conclusion that, okay, we've really kind of drawn the conclusion that it's these three different scenarios, but is there something out there that we're just not thinking about? And then the other thing is, would you want to even ask them that next question, you know, what are, what are those implications that you have to think about? We, we had, we did that exercise a little bit with the principals, and on the paired piece, you know, the things that we're talking about right now came out, but is it a good exercise for those community members to have to do as well? So, I don't know.
We, we share the known hurdles, and then there might be some unknown hurdles that community members have that we.
Leaving it open, you know, the, the whole brainstorming idea, like, that, that works for a lot of different things. My, my concern is that if you're not specific as, hey, we are looking at like these two schools as a pairing, the tendency for everybody to come in and go, that's a great idea for those other schools. And nobody will take it, ownership of it if they don't think it's theirs. And so if you just come in, what do you think of this idea, you may get a very different response than, what do you think of the idea of these two schools being paired? So I.
Self work for us.
I don't know how quickly we can throw up a proposal of a paired school if that's where we wanted to go, but.
I think we have to get over this mindset of overcoming hurdles, because there's millions of hurdles. There are a million reasons why we have not done this already. And so it kind of gets back to, man, creating some energy for why we're doing this, that, that we can be creative and maybe be willing to, because of the benefits we're expecting to get from these changes, we're willing to live with.
Yeah.
Less than ideal facilities for a period of time until we can, I'm just, I'm using this example because it's top of mind, but, because if, if all we do is talk about the hurdles, we're never gonna get this done. Never, 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 not, not with all the commitment of this board and administrative team, it's, we have to change our mindset about this.
It's important to not talk about the hurdles, though.
I'm not saying it's not, I'm not saying not talk about the hurdles, we need to understand that they exist.
Focus on opportunities.
With the mindset of checking them off, yes, this is a hurdle, how are we gonna solve it? This is not insurmountable, how do we get past that? How do we get creative and think past it to the benefits that we're trying to get to? And so I just, I feel like I wanna change the conversation just a little bit.
Start with the why, right?
All of the reasons why we shouldn't be doing this, all the hard stuff that makes it impossible to, we're doing it, because there's fantastic benefits, and then back to what, what I wanna try to convey in this, you know, these messages that we wanna take forward, there's real benefit here for our students. Or we wouldn't be having these conversations, right? It wouldn't be a district goal to have fifty percent, you know, it wouldn't be out there in black and white, and that's, we are not making any progress towards hitting that. I mean, if we wanna change the goal, I'm all, well, I'm not all for that, but I'd better not have it as stated goal, and us not make progress toward it, that really, really bugs me. So, another thing I was thinking about, and you guys probably have done this research, I, I just haven't, but are there other districts that have managed to navigate these kinds of changes better than others? Because it's hard, it's hard for everyone, but I'm just wondering if.
Yeah, there's a showcase district out in Massachusetts that went through this, and unzoned their district, and.
And just, are there some case studies that we can look at, or how, when you need to embrace this? Sorry.
No, no, when you say unzoned, what do you, what?
I'll have to go back and pull that, but they, they literally, as I remember, do you remember that study? I think they unzoned their district, so they, they, they put in a bunch of magnet schools. I think we found when we did the magnet school research, they did a bunch of themed schools, and let kids go wherever they wanted to, and they were far more compact than we are, they were busing their kids all over the place, because they didn't have the geographic reach that we do.
And if you let them go wherever they wanted, they had to provide their own transportation, right?
Yeah, and I'd have to go back and pull that, I've got the research studies sitting somewhere on my electronic desktop.
I'm, I'm as interested in how they engage the community, how they talk about this, they do, they have the problem solved. Because their solutions give, I'm sure are gonna be different from what we come up with, but how, how do they get past the, no, we can never do it, to, we can do this, because we see the benefit, we're agreeing to it, we know it's gonna be hard, however, we'll pursue the road together to get there.
I think we do a little trip on that, too, we can find.
It's sort of change, it's like community change in itself, I don't know.
I know when in ten, when somebody in a neighborhood that was, suggested a paired school, they threatened to move to Madison, and so I looked Madison up, and they had like a bunch of paired schools. That's my, my old thing. This is the kind of thing that makes me and my family move to Madison.
I've heard very good things about Madison's paired schools, by the way.
What?
I've heard very good things about them.
Well, you know, that's a little limited in my research, but it, it's out there, so I know, you know, other places, college towns do things.
So in terms of that discussion, what's the next step?
We just need to figure out a timeline, what's doable, you know, I think coming out of education committee, I felt that sense of urgency, and tonight I feel like there's more understanding that depending on which area that, or which avenue we take. You know, my concern would be what's already been brought up. I don't wanna say, yes, let's do that boundary change and have that decision made by December, yet we're still gonna continue with conversations down the path of paired schools. I don't wanna be what we tried to promise in North Liberty Parents, in that we don't want you to have to attend several different schools over successive years, so. I think we need to be careful to, to promise that we're gonna be able to deliver something if those other things are truly possibilities in the end. If, if we truly think it's gonna be paired school, it probably can't be December then, given what we're already sure.
So when would it be?
Now, you could do, you could do the attendance zone, knowing that you were gonna pair a couple of schools, build their attendance zone, so that they're ready to be paired, and just unpaired now, but paired later.
And I, yeah, I think if we probably, probably have a, a couple, couple, three examples, probably we can find some of the most obvious. And I don't think, I don't think, there's not a bit of me that thinks we can pair the whole district, I don't think that, you know, where we have schools that are very demographically similar, we're not gaining much. So I, you know, I don't, I don't wanna just do something for the sake of doing it, I wanna do it because it gains us demographic talents, operational efficiency, and possibly even better programming opportunities, because you can do more in a four six building targeted for six. So those, for me, are my reasons, I don't wanna do it because, oh, this is, seems like a good idea. I wanna buy some of those other things, and if pairing gets us closer to there along with boundary changes, I think, then I think that's a, is a more realistic picture.
I'd just be curious, I guess, there seems to be a wave from, there's some people in the movement to go to these paired schools, they've thought about it, so like, what schools are you thinking would be the ones that would be obvious paired choice?
Twain, Longfellow, Kirkwood, Wickham, those come to mind as demographic difference, close geography, those things pop to mind. And believe me, I've thought about the Coralville three school system too, that's what they do in Renauld. Everybody goes to every elementary, I mean, just because, again, Coralville Central, Wickham, and Kirkwood, you, you got some, some geographic closeness there. So those to me are my sort of, you know, geographically close and demographically different schools that just pop to the top of my head.
One thing I'm wondering about as you're talking about that is, you know, what that looks like and feels like to have K two, three, six attendance centers in some cases, and then K six buildings in others, you know, what is that, what kind of other impacts are we not thinking that that kind of situation would have, where as, as a district, we're just going to change our philosophy, and it's not only because of paired, but it's, we have a K two attendance center, then we move on to a three six, then we're to a seven eight, or whatever that looks like, that we're, we're all the same, because philosophically, also, we want our buildings to be filled like that, so.
And maybe that's why, you know, why eventually that doesn't really work out, you know, along with lots of other reasons that other people might have.
And I guess, sorry, to me, question, I mean, when you start talking about things like that, then are we talking about different equitable schools? Is this, is that, is a K two school for a Twain, Longfellow, or is that kid getting a different education than whatever happens at, you know, like, is that equitable?
Well, for me, I guess equitable is, you can have different programming offerings that are equitable, clearly, right now, it's super inequitable, right? And we're, some people are really fine with that, right? There are definitely people who will raise voices that are just very fine with the way things are, and why do we need to disrupt it? And, and that's even with, our philosophies are aligned, our curriculum is aligned, but we have like dramatically different. And so to me, if you have some demographic balance, I don't know, I'd have to understand how a K two would be drastically different from a K three. Or frankly, a K three, let's just take the three school thing out of there, but the, a K three, how different is that from a K six? And I don't think it's more different than seventy five percent F R L twelve. You know, I think that those, those inequities are, I, I think we've seen it, I think we have a lot of data that shows that, and I don't know, you know, I mean, that's my thought on that.
So I'm gonna go back to what's the next step?
So we are going to work to put together your notes from this meeting, to try to make some semblance of them in terms of some kind of deck that flows, try to get that to you as quickly as possible for some feedback. I think we wanna add this to the April tenth agenda, so that it's out there publicly, we've got it attached to the agenda, you can take a look at it, talk to us about content, things that are missing, have a conversation on camera, so that people hear and see it. I think that probably in advance of that meeting, we probably wanna start talking about what our spring dates might look like, so we'll get some information to you about dates that we know will have conflicts with other events on the calendar, but we'll, we'll shoot out a bunch of dates for you to think about. And like I said, we know we've got real good control of our facilities, so if we're gonna do it offsite, I would suggest we think about our three high schools, just because we've got a little bit more control of the venue, and it's familiar to people, they know where to go. So if nothing else, if we hit each of the high schools, we hit each of the catchment areas, and give people an opportunity for input and feedback, so, just some thoughts there. What are we missing?
I think that's good, next, you know, because we want, we started the conversation, and now we want input and feedback and conversation, I think.
We won't be able to get this done if we don't have huge, huge, huge community support to do this. I mean, we've gotta start to do these outreach discussions, start getting our network of evangelists and champions and people, you know, I, I think. I do want to change management perspective, maybe.
They'll help us turn the flywheel.
Channel some of our students.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Obviously, we've seen how that voice works.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, right, exactly.
I think they're well aware of probably the experience they had, and how it's different when they progress through their secondary schools, so.
Fantastic idea.
Yeah, I mean, some of our kids who've had, I mean, yeah, we're gonna have a lot of examples right now, you know, just with, you know, those Alexander kids and Kirkwood's, who now are going to different neighborhoods, and what has that been like for them? It hasn't been super smooth, and, oh, we welcome you with open arms, I don't think that's been the, the case, so.
Talk to the Alexander kids about the bus ride.
And also the teachers.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to see teachers involved.
The teachers. Principals are gonna be there. Or, or some teachers in my, my principal.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Take your.
All in favor?
James.
Hi.